All right, Director Moore.
All right, so I just want to start with just a couple of highlights just to kick off, and we'll go through the slides because most of the slides, I think, we've discussed between the last two days. But just some key highlights, I think council know that our agency is in the middle of an organizational cultural change. As part of that organizational cultural change, we have completed our organizational restructuring. I want to stop and I want to highlight some new key members that are heading up our new divisions. One of our divisions, we've heard a lot of the citizens and as well as our, you all talk about programming in our rec centers, what's happening. So, we have Carla Kelly, that's here, she came to us from DC, she's now chief of our, chief of program. Also, another area of concern was our agency, we felt we need to do a better job of connecting and engaging in our communities. And one way of doing that was to create our community engagement and strategic partnerships division, which we've talked about partnerships, and that is headed up by Fran Spiro. And the last area that we saw as a target is how do we continue to maintain our facilities? And if you recall, our maintenance team was, there was Simon Recreation, there was Simon Parks, you had a park maintenance team that dealt mostly park projects, and you had a recreation team that dealt with rec centers. So, we have now brought them together to create our facility maintenance teams. So, that we're really excited about that. I also mentioned on Monday about our strategic plan that we're working on that we will have in place by December 2020, but we call it Recreation 2025, but it'll be in place by December. And we've talked about the Shake and Bake reopening. And one last key that maybe you all don't know is that this past year, we fed or served meals for over 80,000 youth in the city of Baltimore. And that was from our OST program, that's from, of course, when it's inclement weather, we open our centers and we serve meals. So, I wanted to highlight that because I think that's something that you all have constantly been talking about, how we're feeding our youth. So, we are definitely stepping up, and that's in conjunction with the school systems feed program as well as family league. So, with that being said, I'm gonna run through the slides, and I think we'll spend more time asking questions. The first budget is service number 644, the administration. In our administrative budgets, that's where the director's office sits, that's where our IT, our human resource, our physical service department, and that's where our deputy administrator of, deputy director of administration sits there. There's not any significant changes that are happening in our administrative budget. Special facilities, our special facilities is where our Shake and Bake facilities located, is where all of our Mimi de Petro, Myers, it's the facility that in order for it to function, they have to make money. One of the areas we need to highlight is a lot of constituents, one of our facilities that generate a lot of revenue is our, not Mimi, Mount Pleasant, geez. And so, in a couple of weeks, Mount Pleasant will go into a brief renovation to bring it up to par, which is much needed, well overdue. And from that, we should see a significant increase in our revenue. Other places is, we have to determine what we're gonna do with Northwest Golf Course and that line item too. But there again, that's where our enterprise fund sits, and they need to generate revenue there. Recreation for seniors, of course, we run, we have our senior department, we work closely with the health department, there are some of the health department centers that we actually program and run on a daily basis, and the health department funds a position or two there. But then we also have senior program in-house that we manage ourselves at our different senior centers as well as our rec centers. Therapeutic Recreation is another population of our community that we pay a lot of special attention to. One of the things that we did is also in this reorganization is seniors in therapy used to be lumped, that's just one big, it's still on the programming division, but now we have someone that's individually overseeing the direction of therapeutics, and we have someone that's individually overseeing our seniors, which is important as we continue to grow our program and to have two individuals that can be focused on those two populations that are really important to our community. Park programming and events, this is where our special events, this is where our Rangers sit. We have, how many Rangers right now, Courtney? And we're getting ready to hire how many additional for the summer? So, we'll have 13 Rangers, but as if you all recall, our Rangers have, they have limited duties, I mean, and they're, you know, they'll check for if someone is in a space they shouldn't be in, they'll, you know, if, the biggest thing I think Councilman Cohen has been talking about is how do we deal with the law that's on the books, dogs off leash? That is, that is something that's a continuing challenge for our Rangers because like I said, they are limited. Another thing that they're responsible for is cars parking on grass, of course, I think that's just not a Baltimore city challenge, it's a challenge throughout the country of how you keep people off your grass. And I'm a big fan in not having people on the grass, but they can write tickets for cars on that sense. But our Rangers do a really good job of trying to maintain as much as they can with the policy they have. Is that it? Yep, okay. So, that's kind of summarizing the, those, I guess, the slides that we had not talked to, to this point. And with that being said, I think we'll open it up for questions.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. Do we have any intent on expanding offerings that would come through special facilities? Like, we have none currently, is there any service or activity that we currently don't provide that we, we think we need to, you know, create a special facility for?
I think we're always trying to find new ways and new innovative programs that we can offer that may be of interest in the community. For example, there's, there's a large cycling community here in Baltimore, but in this region alone, there's not a Valadron facility. The closest one is up in northern or western Pennsylvania. I mean, that's, that's something for us to explore because that is a high demand. That's just one example. So, we're looking at other options. I know at Upton, Rashawn has introduced wrestling, and another program he's trying to do is expand and maybe offer some form of kickboxing to the community. Because we, we want programming, we want to offer quality programming, but we want, we have to understand our communities, and we have to factor into the budget of their budgets as well to make sure it's quality programming but at a reasonable cost for our community.
Yeah, I know DC has had some success with their baseball academy, and so I think that that might be another opportunity for maybe partnership on a more formal, you know, baseball stadium type facility in the city. And also in the area, there's limits as it relates to batting cages. Anybody who's playing baseball in the area typically goes to, off of Bel Air Road or maybe Timonium to be able to, and so that, you know, these are things that can generate revenue as well as provide a service. In addition, kind of related to that, can, and I know I asked Bob this, I can't remember all of the answers, but can you speak to the city's archery program and facilities for archery?
I'm gonna, yeah, to Bob, because I think we have a limited offering, I'm not even sure if we even have an offering still, but Bob?
Yes, our plans are to, we were doing it before at Cary Murray Nature Center. Our plans are to, now that we've kind of revised that whole scheme of things out of Cary Murray, to make it a real bona fide nature center, not so much an animal menagerie of sorts. We do plan on starting archery program there as well. And then when the Cahill Fitness Center, Wellness and Fitness Center opens up, we do plan on working an archery program into that as well. We've met with the community, that was one of the ask.
At Cahill was one of that?
At Cahill, yeah. Our issue was, is that I think the community wanted us to put up a permanent archery range, similar, we visited a couple in a couple of different counties, and we just didn't think that in an urban setting that that would be doable for us. I mean, we went down to Anarona County, and it was on private land, and they actually had trees on each side with a 40-yard range of sorts. And that's what the ask was, to do something similar to that. So, our plans are to just have targets located at the rec center that we can move in and out of a easy access place, that we requested on the, when the design was made, and to do archery there that way. And then at Cary Murray, we're gonna put up a net that would catch the arrows before they go out into the woods.
So, what's the resistance to creating, I guess, a, I don't, I don't know how to describe it, but it would be competition-ready archery?
I don't think there's any resistance, I think that is a possibility for sure. You know, even when Cahill was mentioned, I mentioned airsoft rifle as a possibility, we can design one in the rooms that have an indoor archery range plus an airsoft that could kind of transform into an airsoft rifle range due to the fact that it is an Olympic sport. So, they, the community resisted that idea, the airsoft, but they were receptive to the archery. So, you know, I was a part of a seminar down in Ocean City at the conference where it was given on archery, basic archery, and how to expand that program. So, we do have a couple of contacts out in Frederick County that's willing to help us out if we do plan to expand, not just from a novice thing, but into a competitive thing.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see us move towards not creating something that's temporary or mobile, but something where archers from around the region could come to our facility for contests. I mean, especially if the community is asking for archery, I think that we should, we should create an opportunity that really becomes an attraction. And so, anything that I can do, I'd like to be kept abreast of how it moves forward, and anything I can do to advance that kind of discussion, I'd like to be a part of.
All right, very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen's here, unless it's his doppelganger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, not my doppelganger. Director Moore, appreciate your work, your staff as well. Thank you for, so I have two topics I want to talk about. One is the work around trauma, the other is the work around off-leash dogs. Starting with off-leash dogs, appreciate your staff and Jenny and all the partnership. It is concerning though that we have this fleet of Rangers, and for the most part, they I think do a really good job, but are not empowered with the tools to be able to enforce off-leash dogs in the way that we would hope. They have expressed concern for their safety when confronting people whose dogs are off-leash. They, we've kind of gone back and forth about whether they actually have ticketing and enforcement power. So, I was wondering if you would articulate what it is you need or they need in order for your Rangers to really be empowered to enforce the law? Because again, when I think about a crime like having your dog off-leash, it can seem trivial until someone's dog or child gets bit, and then we have a huge problem. And it's one of these, you know, it's like the, it's a tragedy of the commons thing where when people see one dog off-leash, then they think, oh, I'm allowed to have an off-leash dog, and so then they do it, and then everybody else does it, and it just becomes this clash between communities. So, for the record, if you could just articulate what it is you need in terms of changing the law or whatever to empower Rangers to be able to do what I believe is their job, which is enforce park laws?
And I think this is, this is a deeper conversation. I agree, is some legislation that needs to be improved, but I think we, in order for me to articulate the best answer, I think that should be done in a form where we have the commissioner of the police department in the room to understand how he can support us in this case. Because I could give you a list of things that I think, but we have to also have the police department and the commissioner that vets this and say, okay, what's realistic? So, instead of just blurring out a ton of things that we could, we could use to, for enforcement, I would like to have, I think there was a conversation at one point in time, I'm not sure what happened to that, but I'm willing to take the lead of a follow-up, we were supposed to have a meeting between me, you, and Mr. Hammond to discuss this in greater detail, and I would like to follow up with maybe having that meeting to try to start ironing out some of the logistics of what's needed versus me giving you a laundry list of things and only to come back and find out that, you know, it's not possible to do something else. So, if you would, I would like to make that the next step.
I would be happy to do that. I will say that my staff, your staff, our community have met a couple of times with some of the local BPD leadership, Major Brown, et cetera. And again, while I don't want to go too deep down this rabbit hole, I just think, and I'll state this for the record, that if we're gonna pay people to be park rangers, we should empower them with all the tools they need to properly enforce the law. Because citizens see them and see all kinds of dogs running around crazy, and they see them not doing anything about it, it just reinforces in people's mind that law enforcement is not taking this seriously. So, I will follow up with you and see if we can get a next step meeting, but again, appreciate the work your staff has done, and I will just state for the record that I think it's really important, if we're gonna pay people with tax dollar money, that they have the tools they need to enforce.
I agree with you, sir. Fully agree.
I just had one thing. Go ahead. So, I mean, I think you're aware, Councilman, that Joshua from your office got our Rangers, who are led by Courtney, to meet with Baltimore Police and I believe Animal Control, and I think they all agreed, okay, we're gonna go out every Thursday for the next three Thursdays. I don't know what the result of that was, but we were trying to get our Rangers to stand next to, you know, somebody with enforcement authority. So, I thought that we were trying to achieve some results to kind of like shout across the bow to all the folks out there, like, okay, we're serious here. You know, I don't know if somebody could speak to what happened.
Yeah, Courtney, I don't want to put you on the spot, but are there any, have we done that yet, the going out, are there any outcomes, results?
So, as far as I know, they did go out there a couple of times. I don't think any tickets were actually issued, a couple of warnings were. I can tell it with the Rangers, but they have not reported being able to cite anybody further with the dogs off-leash. I mean, they took, the Rangers at the moment cannot do any citations unless the offender provides their own ID, which no one willingly does.
Yeah, I mean, that's become like a running joke within the community, is people like, oh, I don't have ID on me.
Rangers can issue citations, I think the challenge is if they don't provide them. Where, for example, if there's a car parked on the grass, it's simple, they can write a ticket based on, they can, they have the car tag, I think, but if it's an off-leash dog, you have to get them to provide you some kind of ID in order to write this ticket or who you're writing the ticket to. So, I think they, I agree with you that this is a concern that you have brought, and I just really feel that let's get the, the people in the room who can make these decisions to start understanding what is needed to move this forward to give the Rangers. Because I don't want it to be seen all sort of the Rangers don't do their job, they, there's many more things beyond just issuing citations that our Rangers are responsible for, but I think one of the biggest challenges right now is the off-dog leash. I think the parking issue is not as severe as the off-dog leash. So, I would love to, let's make, move that forward, so.
All right, great.
I'm, just an update, as I talked to Jenny and Courtney, because Jenny and I met with the police and Animal Control and Joshua and those couple of folks from the neighborhood, and I thought we clearly said, okay, for the next four Thursdays, it sounds like the Rangers got out there with Animal Control, but the police was a no-show, right?
Right when they started to. Hi, right when they started to connect, the email went down, and they didn't have any phone numbers, and I talked to Carla, they just got phone numbers, and so now they're gonna go out, they're scheduling times to go out together. Carla's, our Ranger, was going out, and he said, of course, there were less people off-leash, so he hadn't written any citations, because I told him we wanted to do citations, not warnings. But they're making that connection, and they're setting up a schedule, and he's supposed to let me know what that is as soon as it's solidified.
Well, again, thank you for all your staff that's been really responsive on this. It just seems like a challenge that there's a solution out there, we can all collectively figure it out. Second thing I want to ask you about, again, appreciate your partnership, Carla and everyone else, on the trauma-responsive rec center policy we've been working on. I was wondering if you could touch a little bit just on sort of your staff and some of what we've seen, which is a lot of vicarious traumatization, secondhand trauma, folks who are picking up a lot of what our kids and communities are often putting out, and some of the work you're doing to, and we're doing to get folks better trained up and also get them support and resources that they need.
We've, Stella Clinton in our office is working closely with your office and the Health Department and other agencies to figure out what is the long-term goal of how we put a more robust trauma-informed care training program. Our staff is trained minimum once a year, but it's real high level. So, what we're doing in this process in conjunction with, with your office and other agencies is assessing what our current status from our staff, what are some of our staff challenges and some of their needs. Another thing that we even talked about is that some of our own staff may have experienced some trauma, so we need to be able to identify that trauma within them as well before they can go in and start educating others. In addition, I have passed a report over to Carla and Stella that you forward to me to review. We've also, Stella informed me yesterday, we're at reactivating the committee that we used to have around trauma-informed care, but what we want to do in that first meeting is kind of get a better understanding of what's gonna be the role of this committee during this process. And then I think we're planning a trip in early fall to go to another city, Cleveland in particular, to see what they're, they're doing there. So, we're, we're starting to address it, but we don't have a formal policy and plan in place as of yet, but we are working closely towards getting that with your support.
Well, again, appreciate your partnership on that, and I think that as we think through how do we prevent violence, how do we prevent trauma, investing more on this side, I think will yield really great results over the long term and enable us to spend less on law enforcement when our young people are getting the support that they need. So, again, appreciate all your staff and you for the partnership on that as well.
We thank you for your support and your commitment to this much-needed and important issue in our city.
Thank you.
Director Moore, two boilerplate questions. First one is on behalf of Council President Scott. We are currently in the first year of implementation of the president's equity assessment legislation. Have you hired or identified an equity coordinator, and if so, who is that person?
We have, we have not hired an equity coordinator. I think something that is in our upcoming, this Recreation Strategic Plan, we're developing an equity scorecard, so we can also define exactly what's gonna be the role of our equity coordinator for our agency, but we have not identified a person at this point in time, no.
Okay, have you held or scheduled any trainings for your department on equity and inclusion?
We have, and I can get Jenny to come speak, we have scheduled a training. So, you want to talk about the training, Jenny?
Kimberly, you got all this?
As part of the funding that we get from South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, we've scheduled an implicit bias training. We had it on the books for a couple of months ago, but it got canceled, so it's rescheduled for the second week of September, I think. Anyway, I think it's the second week of September, the 20th and the 21st.
So, she was stating that the training is scheduled for September, early September.
All right, and has your department conducted a baseline analysis of the equity impacts of the agency's existing and proposed actions? And if not, is that something you plan to do?
That's, that's something that we are, I think we can, we're gonna be able to address a lot of this in the strategic plan that we're, we're working on now. Equity, equity is one of our three key pillars, social equity is one of our key pillars. So, that's, we have not, but that's something that we will address in this upcoming plan that we're working on.
Okay. Has the police commissioner or anyone else at the police department been in touch with you about potential partnerships with our young people, specifically with Squeegee Kids?
Not about Squeegee Kids, but they have, me and the police commissioner met recently to talk about some of our needs for the summer. So, we have had an initial meeting, me and Commissioner Harrison, to talk about some of our needs, what are some of our needs at our swimming pools, you know, what are some of our other events that's, that's coming up. Yesterday, our team met with the police department to lay out the, the plans for the Charm City Games event, the opening ceremony. So, there is ongoing conversation with the police department, but not in particular with about the Squeegee Kids.
Got it. And I guess the last line of questioning has to do with the cybersecurity incident that occurred on May 6th. How soon after that incident did you receive communication from either the CIO or anyone from BSIT?
It, I know it went down that morning, I didn't directly receive something from Frank, but our IT team was, was notified by BSIT that there was a, there was a breach and that all of the, the network had went down. On the following day, there was a more in-depth meeting with all the agency heads led by the mayor, and the council president was there, and that's when Frank gave us a more detailed understanding of what transpired. And from that point, there was a, we identified two individuals, which was Justin King, who was our IT chief, and Jaciel Smith was chief of staff, that was on calls at 10 and 1 o'clock every day to stay abreast of what was going on. And then for about three days, there was an agency head meeting at 9:00, and then eventually we just went away from the agency head meetings and had the 10 and 1 o'clock meetings to keep us up to date.
Thank you. And was there any guidance provided to you on email addresses, whether or not you should create them, the Gmail addresses?
Not directly with me, but there was a, like I said, we start having our in-house meetings when this affected us, and, and one of the things, we start talking to our IT team was what options did we have? And I know through administration, they established what they called the What's App, but our IT department recommended that we create these workarounds with the Gmail accounts. And, and I don't know if that came from our IT team directly, or if it came from BSIT, that I can't answer.
Okay, and finally, is VCRP up and functional with email now?
Most, 3001 is up and functioning, 2600 was brought online yesterday, so most of our administrative buildings are functioning. I still think we're limited out of Shake and Bake, is that correct? We'll function, okay. So, so all, I think them, them key target areas, our rec centers wasn't affected because they're on Comcast, but the, all of the administrative buildings is up and functioning, but one of the more important was also was getting our enterprise funds back online.
Outstanding. Burnett, do you have any questions?
I do.
Take it away.
Just really, actually really quick, and I know this is something that Ms. Morgan and I have talked about, but just moving forward, if you could keep us in the loop on, back to the sort of the facilities maintenance piece and management and upgrades, I know that there, you guys are stretched thin with resources on like basketball courts and tennis courts and that kind of stuff. So, I'm, one, just wanted to say thank you for the partnership. Your team has been great at helping maintain the spaces in my district, and, and just if there is the, or the development of a strategic plan for that, you know, we'd like to be kept in the loop on sort of, I know it's coming together, I still like what the game plan will be to really strategically deal with maintenance issues, some have been longstanding. So, you know, as that develops, please incorporate the council into that conversation. Because, you know, as we did our site visits in my district, I know that there were some spaces that were, you know, you guys were even surprised were park spaces, I mean, they were being maintained, but like, you know, these, I have a lot of those non-traditional spaces that we, I talk about a lot, and so it just would, would want to be a part of that conversation moving forward so that there is equity in the distribution of those capital upgrades and resources. But also with that equity lens being a focus on areas that have, haven't traditionally received a whole lot of attention from the limited resources that your department has admittedly. So, just wanted to throw that out there, and just also a thank you on, I got to visit the Cary Murray Nature Center, I want to say about two weeks ago, was really impressed with the direction that that facility is heading. Looks great, especially from where it was a few years back, so I just wanted to shout that out, that any of these spaces that young people are coming to, I'm excited to see that there is a renewed investment in, especially in the parks. in, especially in the park side of it. Our, our kids may live in the city, but we do have so many resources that are in the wilderness, and exposing young people to that is, is so important so they get that perspective, because they may not be able to go hiking in the Midwest or the Appalachian Trail, but, you know, the Gwynne Falls Trail is pretty nice, too. And, and, and the more we can expose them to those kind of activities in a, in a, in a real way, I think is important. So I just, I thank you and a kudos to your, your, your folks that are working to make those spaces vibrant for our young people.
And, and, and I thank you for your support, and, and as you see things in your district of things of concern, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, but we will make sure that, I know I talked to Councilman Costello early on, once we have this plan, once administration endorses this new rec 2025 plan, that I would like to have a hearing so that we can, you know, share this with council and, and talk about the full direction of where we're going as an agency, but when it comes to facilities, we, we definitely will, will love to have a conversation with you all, because, I mean, it's important that we hear from the constituents ball, so you all here, so we would like to kind of develop a plan, a strategic plan together versus working in vacuums. We come up with something, you have something totally different. We've got state legislators that's thinking something totally different, so if we can all work together, then we can have a solid plan, and we're all on the same common page.
Yep. And then, I guess, see, you're not here, I'll keep on going. So the other thing that has come up a lot, and if you could speak to it, you know, there's always, there's a lot of conversation around like how many rec centers we have, and part of my, you know, I, I think that's important to make sure we are able to get the capital investments we need to build new facilities, but can you speak to efforts to modernize the facilities that we do have already on the books, and not so much like hanging drywall and lighting, but one of the things that I, I'm always pushing back on folks when they say that, you know, the kids need more to do, they, they do, and there's a lot of activities to enroll in, but we also have to make sure that the spaces are appealing for young people. Do they, you know, I think I mentioned this at another hearing this week, but sorry if I say, saying it again.
All right, no.
It's day four, so my brain isn't all here yet, but, you know, making sure that there's Wi-Fi and charge reports and, and, and just technology that attracts the young people to want to come to a space that may be a little bit older, but can you talk to efforts to really look at like meeting this next generation's interest and needs that are a lot different than when I was a kid and, and, and some other folks in the room? Those things change. So hopscotch may have been lit, you know, 30, 40 years ago, but now they want to know how they can stream YouTube while they are waiting to get back on the basketball court. So, and that's what draws, draws kids to the centers, I know for sure, is, you know, what, what are, so just talk a little bit about that, modernization, where we are, and, and sort of where we're headed as a, as an agency.
Thanks, that's a great question, and I totally agree. Recreation is forever-changing, and I think today's youth, where when we was growing up, as you stated, we had an idea what we thought was recreation, but now as, as professionals in this industry, we're having to adjust to what they're calling now the Gen Z, I think is what they are. And, and they're not your traditional rec kids. They want to be engaged, they want to be outside. For example, what teens want today in the summer months may not be that I want to be inside of the defined walls of a rec center. I may want to be on the open field. I may want to do, there's things now called the silent disco parties, where you have the headphones, and you may have three channels, and you can listen to whatever music you want, but you have one live DJ, but everything is played through the headphones, so everyone can have their own kind of touch with music. So that's something that, that's some program that we're looking at, buying equipment and implementing, but there's, there's many other programs that we, we are, we're talking about. I don't want to spoil the surprises, because we're still working through some of those. But when it comes to the facilities itself, we have 43 existing rec centers. We have three additional rec centers that are coming online this year, early January. We have Bocheck, of course, is scheduled to open up in October, which is a field house. We have Tuwanda that is looking for early 2020 with its renovation, and then we have, in conjunction with University of Maryland Medical Center, the community, we're working on bringing Harlem Park online early fall.
And where, where would Cahill fit in that as well?
Cahill is in spring of 2021.
Right.
And then, if you recall, we have newer facilities. Also, we have the Mill Brunt Fitness and Wellness Facility at Cherry Hill that will come on summer of 2021. So we have some larger facilities that's coming on, but one of the biggest things that we're looking at as an agency, there was a plan that was done by Green Play that addressed maybe building 10 large fitness and wellness facilities throughout the city. We're assessing that plan now and says, is that truly the, the best use of our funds? I understand the theory, it makes a lot of sense, but in order to put, bring in these regional facilities, then you have to assess, do you, is there a need to have a major facility, and then you have three neighborhood centers that are less than a mile from this bigger facility? If, if the, the direction, which I don't see anybody having an appetite, would be that you would somewhat remove some of those neighborhood centers, and then you will have the bigger facility, then yes, that makes sense. If not, then maybe it's not in our best interest to continue to look at building these larger facilities. A larger facility takes about $20 million to build, and I can, we could take that same $20 million and we can improve anywhere between four to six of our existing facilities. But in this improvement, one of the things in today's time is that we're changing the, the design of our buildings. Most of our rec centers was built in the early 70s, and there was a lot of center block. There was, the, the whole purpose was every room had to be defined. In today's time in recreation, there's more open, what they call wild space, and that's removing some existing walls. So our, our first ideal, the new trend for the innovative rec center is the renovation that we're gonna be doing at Tuwanda, will give us a good example of where we would like to hit, and that's removing some existing walls, that's bringing a fitness facility, that's bringing in a teen center that's inside of an existing lobby, not defining our teens to a, a room, but putting them in a lobby area with the, the charging ports, with the high-top tables, with the chairs, so they can socialize with their friends, as well as putting a couple of the, the gaming televisions up, so they can come in, you can have gaming chairs, and you can build, really be interactive. They have their space, but then they also can be supervised, but that person supervising that space can also manage other parts of the building. So I think going forward, what we are looking at as an agency is where's these facilities, what rotation do we put them on, and then identifying the funds of saying, if I had approximately six, a half a million to $750,000 per for some of these existing facilities and capital going for it, then we can renovate more of the, those existing older facilities. So we are truly assessing what is the best plan and, and direction, and that's part of this whole 2025 discussion, is, you know, what can we do in the next six years? And what I mean by what we can do in the next six years is not wait until year six to start it, but here's the plan, and this is how we're gonna tackle some of our parks, some of our pools, some of our rec centers, but it's in a plan, and everybody has agreed on this plan, and so we work as a, as a unit with elected officials, the community, as well as our department to develop that going forward.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I think that's the, the key piece as well, is making sure that with all of these new centers, and you do a pretty good job at it, just to continue on with the community engagement piece. I know this, this is occurring right now at Mary Rodman where there's, you know, several input sessions, they're coming to community meetings, and they're doing a great job. So just, the more we can do with that, I would also recommend connecting with our youth commissioners. They have a lot of insight, and that's sort of an existing apparatus of engaged young people that you can, your agency can tap into when it comes to getting input into what do young people want to see of these facilities, what, what are the things they would be attracted to, and these are mostly teens, so they are right in the demographic you're looking at. And I know that they also just, they have a youth violence summer next Tuesday, I believe, here in City Hall. So this, this cohort of youth commissioners really seems to want to be, really have a voice at, at setting the direction of the city, and the more we can engage them, if you aren't already doing it, you may be already, and if, if you are, my apologies, but just the more we can engage them in a, in a input gathering process or having them convene in their districts or our districts, groups of young people so that we can get that input. So, you know, where that, as you move forward with these plans, that they are reflective of the things kids want to see, because if they, if the facilities don't have what they want in there, they're not going to come.
Right.
And we can build, you know, 15 new centers, but if they, if they're walking in and it's not reflective of the stuff that they're into, they're still gonna want to be where they, where they are or stay at home. I mean, it's, you know, video games are, are a thing, and, and cell phones are a thing. There's a lot of technology that's pervasive throughout society, and we need to make sure that inside the center reflects the things that they can get outside so that they do want to come in and, and enjoy the, the offerings.
Good. Colleagues, any other questions?
Director, BCRP team, thank you very much. Appreciate everything. We're in recess till 1:30. Recession till 2 o'clock, correction.